So this is similar to what I've shared with you guys on a quarterly basis in terms of how we're doing in terms of expenditures and obligations for our ARP money. With the obligation deadline coming up at the end of this year, we really need to make sure that everything is obligated or we're going to lose it. I just finished yesterday the second quarter reporting to the feds and we show, based on what I've reported, that there's about $16 million that isn't obligated yet. This is different from the balance that you see on the first slide, that we have 25.9 million. And that's because we have about 9 million that is obligated through the reporting. So on the second and third slide, those are our community development initiatives and our technical assistance expenditures, just to show where those projects that are out in the community are at in terms of being expended. And they're both, you know, with over two years left, they're both more than three quarters of the way. So we expect that those ones will be fine in terms of expenditures by the 2026 deadline. But we really wanted to just talk about revenue replacement today. And so on the fourth slide, we'll see what we've already done with revenue replacement, which Lisa can talk a little bit more about that one.
Okay. On the right-hand side of page, the top section is the calculation, calculated revenue loss for 2020 through 2023. Those are the four years that we were allowed to calculate revenue replacements. So you see it increases every year. Which page are you? Fourth. I remember them. The next page. So over the four years, we were able to calculate 48,879,684 that we are allowed to take revenue replacements. It goes up every year because built into the formula that we're allowed to use for this is a 5% revenue increase that should be expected for any city. And since we haven't increased taxes in any of these years, we actually have, we have not increased that 5%. So the amount that we're allowed to take increases each year. So right now, we've got 48 million. We've used, in the next section down, the amount used is, we've used 21 million of that. We've bought, in the first year, real trucks and bumper trucks specified department, incinerator there. Baldwin Park, spent $4,000 on that. And the DCD and DECT and the race loans were about 12 points amount. Those plank acceleraries that have come out of there for the GIS and data analysts, 34, 748, and the total is 21,584. That leaves us 27,294,950. Now, the amount unextended on the other side, we thought the initial grant of 76 million, the expended amount of about 50 million, leading us with balance of 25 million. So basically, we could take everything that we have left and run it through revenue replacement if we wanted to.
And not lose it with the deadlines.
Not lose it. It's no longer. And we'll go into a little bit more depth talking about that, but that's the general.
The next slide, these are the remaining projects that still have balances in them that we would be recommending to run through revenue replacement and their amounts. These are all, you know, projects that we've already, they've all been voted on, they're all set to go, but because they haven't all, they're not all under contract, we can't obligate them yet. And so the fear would be not having them obligated by the end of this year and then that money needing to go back to the government. I do have a few of them that are starred on here, which these are projects that for the most part are obligated out and we expect to be fully expended by, I believe, the end of this year. So if we didn't want to run absolutely everything through revenue replacement, these ones could stay where they're at.
Are the ones that are on our list as a bulletin?
They're the ones that have stars after them. So under public works, curb cuts, the watershed, the lift station and landing station, in planning, it's digital infrastructure and the website. And for community and economic development, the community development initiatives and the technical assistance grants. And if you're wondering why the total on this page is a smaller number than our balance, it's because we have about 1.7 million sitting in revenue. It's already gone through revenue replacement, just as we've expended out. So then, on the next slide is really what our proposal is to do, which is to run all of our remaining unobligated things through revenue replacement. And by doing that, set up a mirror image budget in a new fund that has our same allocation budgets. And Lisa can talk more about that one.
Mechanics of this, there's several different documents that'll have to go through council. Resolution to transfer these funds from their various different buckets in the ARP fund into the revenue replacement account. So that would be accounts transfer. Resolution to reimburse the general fund out of that revenue replacement account, and that would be the, you know, the 20 to 24 million dollar reimbursement. The ordinance to set up revenue and expense budgets in the general fund to be able to actually transfer that money back out in the general fund and into a grant account or a grant fund. As Victoria said, we would set up a mirror image in a just, in a different fund. So we would still have an ARP fund, it would just not be under the regulations for federal government side anymore. I just began. The city of Erie.
Without deadlines anymore.
Correct.
We would be able to stretch the parks to make sure that we get matching grants on this, we'd be able to stretch some of the staffing to make sure that it isn't abruptly ending.
Yeah, we'll get more out of everything if we can do it this way. And then we would need to wire, a resolution to wire transfer the funds from the general fund to a new fund, and ordinance to set budgets in the new fund. It's similar to when we did those loans a few years back and we had a really loan explanation, letter of explanation along with what we were doing and several documents go through council. One sets probably the way we would do it.
Who's working with parks and public spaces right now?
British. Let me.
Yes.
When the process of selecting the consultants, ever that this company has this not, we should get everybody else. There's going to be a lot in the hour shooting.
Because for me, I'm a little, I have a question on the community development initiatives, like what exactly was that? And why didn't we spend it in a timely manner? Like, why are we able to have still over half, 591,000? What is that supposed to be earmarked for?
So if you actually go back to this slide, this is, those are all of those projects. Those are our community development initiatives. It's the third slide.
Oh, it's the money that was pulled back because these specific organizations weren't able to follow the regulations?
No, it's just the money that's left. They were originally all, I believe it's, I mean, 20 something, they were awarded 2.3 million and they've expended up till now 1.7 and have about 566,000 left. They're all doing really well.
And that's something where they submit a payment request for and check, and a check is issued. So if they meet their commitment, that would be exhausted by the end of the funding term.
These were awarded through an application process and then maybe that revealed the applications and we got awarded these funds and some of them will finish with their plans and some of them are just getting started.
Yeah, we kept a pretty close eye on them. We get progress reports from them every quarter. You know, any budget changes that we need to go through, we go through with them. The only one that really doesn't look good on this list is that Godenziya Crossroads is at zero, but they're putting on a new group and they are doing that right now. So we expect by the end of next quarter, they will be at 100%, if not close to it.
When we work with the, going back to the parks and the consultants, what does the consultant really do? Do they, if we're getting community outreach, what does the, do they provide like a, hey, this is what I think you guys should do with this park? Or how does that?
The community getting put from residents, that's what we got.
Okay.
There will be a number of opportunities for residents to do focus groups, who will do statements over their views, who will, they will be talking to a lot of the family on this, of people we're going to get input from. And we will also provide them the just Victoria budget, the results of that survey that we did, that can identify priorities. But we didn't have a lot of input from news in that survey and so we really wanted to be very intentional about changing input from news about what their priorities are. So it's going to be very resident-focused and the recommendations will then be homing by consultants and say, like, who's looking for the residents you want? For example, where these things have been done elsewhere and then they will provide these recommendations to us.
Okay.
So the next week, just kind of outlining the benefits and risks and what our suggestions are going to be.
Yeah. You know, under the ARP ruling, sending this money through revenue replacement isn't allowable thing to do. You know, it would hold up for any financial audit. We've been on multiple webinars in the last few months where they basically say, this, you should do this. If there's any question, you should do it this way. It's the way to get your money past those deadlines. Essentially, an easy button, they call it. Our consultant agreed. And like I said, the benefit is it releases these funds from the deadlines and regulations. At the same time, we've also talked that that's a potential risk of it being released from the deadlines and regulations because, you know, there was, there was a purpose to this money and we don't want, you know, you've all voted on this already, we wouldn't want any future.
Yeah. Kind of what we're coming into, what was already decided upon us. So yeah, that's why we're asking the hard questions because my concern comes down to, without the federal government having these regulations and guidelines, how are we going to make sure that the people who are going along with the plans are actually doing what we had intended for the monies? That's my concern.
Right. And I think what we wanted to do, it's our last one, is keeping beneficiary agreements and deadlines in place. So at least for the people who've already received their agreements, nothing's changing for them. You know, they're already in contracts with the city to do this and to have the money spent by a specific time. And we really want to hold them to that. If something comes up and we need to do like a six-month extension for a specific reason, we can amend the agreements. But that was one of our main suggestions, was really keeping all of that in place. But it just alleviates those deadlines from us and the city and the reporting and the administration side.
And keeping the current allocation buckets in place would ensure that we would continue with the spirit of the ARP grant, spending it on things that are allowable, only allowable under the grant. I think that's the right thing to do because this money was received for a particular purpose.
Right.
And.
To help those communities involved impacted by COVID.
Yes.
I need to say a further question.
Yes, exactly.
Last question?
Well, I mean, we're not at the question part, we only don't do questions.
And you do questions with them?
Yeah, at the end, we'll do a question.
Nothing's prevented.
No, 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 nothing's prevented. It was just normal.
So then I went and I tried to find just some examples, it's our last slide, of other cities and municipalities that are kind of doing the same thing, just as like a little bit of reassurance. I found, I was able to find two examples today. Kalamazoo County in Michigan reported 100% of their, they were awarded 51.5 million. They put 100% of that through revenue replacement for projects covering, quote, "a myriad of internal county department projects as well as community partner projects." And Greensboro, North Carolina did the same thing. They were awarded just under 60 million. They did it through two different sets of revenue replacement. But I think what's important about these, and I've included links if you want to visit them, is they're still tracking where all of this money is going. They've got great dashboards up on their website that says, yeah, we sent it all through revenue replacement, but these are the projects that it went to and here's how all of them are going, which is essentially what we do as well right now with all of our projects is we've got tracking sheets, knowing where all the money has gone, what needs to be spent, who our contractors are. So it's just, it was helpful to see these two places that receive, they receive less than us, but it's still, you know, similar to our amount, just to see that they've done it and it's working well for them and it's just a reason that we should do it.
Well, I know Councilmember Nelson has mentioned many times over the last few years that, you know, revenue replacement would just take all the regulation and all the red tape away and make everybody a little less stressed about what projects we can focus on and use this money for as long as, you know, it's within the guidelines. So I know he's happy. He looks like he's happy.
Yeah. No, I mean, this is, this was the biggest change that happened in the final rule, which happened as soon as we got into office, right after all of the money had already been allocated. All the money was allocated before the final rule came out. And the biggest change in the final rule was this. I mean, I think it would have, I mean, I've been harping about, yeah, the entire time we've been in, well, a week less than the entire time we've been in office. And I mean, I think it, I think it could have, would have, and should have changed the whole thing, but I appreciate the way we've been able to adapt to it, especially the community economic development, revolving loans that came out of that, I think are much more dynamic way to, to keep the impact going. Like, there's, there's a lot to really like about finally making this decision.
Right. Yeah. My, my concern is just the making sure that we stick to what these funds were intended to. And I plan on being here a while, so I'm going to help make sure that happens. And I don't know about my fellow colleagues on council who feel the same, but I want to make sure that the ARP funds are actually impactful to our community, whether that be the public spaces that we have, or the revolving loans that we offer, or many projects that we can help contribute to. So I'm happy to see that there's a way to make the staff in the city halls a little less stressed, but at least be able to focus on these projects that we hope to see come to fruit one day.
And I think it's important to note that, like, we're not in a bad place at all. You know, everything that I'm hearing through webinars and different emails that I get from the government is that, you know, most municipalities, they've only obligated or expended a third of their funds. We're already expended over two-thirds of our funds and we've got, what, more than half of the length of the program left. So I'm not, we're not in a bad place, is what I want to say. It's like, we're doing really well with it, but there is, there are questions on certain projects and getting those obligated that I think this helps us stay on track with.
I just wanted to add that some of our beneficiaries through the community development initiatives, some of them are undergoing capital construction. And that takes time. If in order, if it's, depending on the dollar amount, they're required to get, do RFPs, request for proposals. And our intention is to make sure that that work is completed. But if we had to have everything obligated by 12/31 of '24, that could be in jeopardy if those aren't in place.
Well, the only thing is, because I found out recently, is that actually the beneficiaries and subrecipients aren't held to the obligation deadline. They're still held to the expenditure deadline, but once we've entered into an agreement with a subrecipient or a beneficiary, that is acting as it being obligated from us. They are not responsible for having their funds obligated by that deadline, but they are responsible for having it expended by that deadline. And we would like to hold them to that expenditure deadline.
Lisa?
So when you said that we've already spent two-thirds of the money, how much of that is stuff? I'm just, I'm just making sure that I, making sure that that's the most accurate information for my own or for any of the public, because I know a lot of that money went through revenue replacement into race, into economic development, to loan funds. Has that money already been deployed out?
For.
Or when you said two-thirds, are we just talking about like for ARP guidelines purposes?
For the most part, yeah, just for ARP.
It's out of our account.
Okay.
Into races and the CDs.
I, I mean, I see that Chris is here. Do you, how much of that have you been able to deploy? I mean, is there?
Revenue replacement.
Yeah.
And so you're going to get that through the project list. I'm looking at like expanding fiber for velocity net, five iron project, child development centers, expanding availability to daycare, some of the smaller financing projects like Urban Honey Bakery. We've done a lot of, well, you see them all because they come through.
Yeah, yeah.
They come through here. So 12th and Green Garden, the new owner of that and the future project there. So, you know, there's been a lot of good projects that we wouldn't have been able to fund some without that. So there's a lot more on the radar. We're working with Eastside Renaissance, you'll see that on here, or I think that already went through. None of those, we wouldn't have had enough in the funds to do all of those. So there's probably been 25 or 30 examples of projects that by, by creating these revolvers, we were able to do, wouldn't have been able to do with our traditional enterprise zone. So that money's been out for a long time.
So I was overly impressed with her two-thirds thing and I found it to be unbelievable. So just to, just to help me adjust that into the real numbers of it, what percent have you deployed of the money that went through revenue replacement out into revolving loans on a ballpark?
It's probably about two-thirds.
Wow, awesome.
I'm getting ready to do my quarterly loan report and see that in a couple days.
Yeah.
And I want to say combined right now, I've got maybe four and a half million available, but there's other projects that are on the horizon coming up.
Yeah.
Two-thirds is about what I've got out there right now. But they're all working in good projects.
Yeah.
It's doing what it's supposed to do. And you've heard me say this before, the beauty of it is it's coming back to us.
Yeah.
We can keep reusing it and we get a little bit of interest, it's not the main driver, but, you know, we don't have to grant all the time to make things work.
Right.
Yeah, grants are great, but sometimes making sure that we have something for later is important.
Right. So I mean, we're going to be able to look back years from now and say we went from, you know, four or five million in loan capacity to 25 million and it's out there and it's working. So.
Do we have any idea where race is on their deployment?
We, this last quarter, we expended to them.
Over two million.
I believe, yeah, they don't have that much left.
So I mean, they, we put money, sorry, through revenue replacement.
Oh, sorry.
We have.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I, yeah.
That we don't.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm going to knock you down from two-thirds to about 60%, but that sounds like it's way ahead of the class.
It's way ahead of the rest of the country.
Anyways, congrats to the administration and to how you guys have been able to execute that.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Does anyone on council have any questions? All righty, Dave, what was your question really quickly?
Thanks. My question is, February this year, the projects on pages, the projects for revenue replacement are going away, we're just putting money in a just like pocket of funds. The expectation is that we're going to spend that money exactly the same as August.
Yes.
We just wanted to get the regulations and the timeline off the books so that we can hold on to the monies after the 2025 deadline, if I'm not mistaken.
Twenty-six. Yeah, so that was actually, because we discussed this in caucus, I feel like everybody on council is pretty well familiar with it. But for the public that's watching that wouldn't have been able to hear him ask the question, what this basically changes is that it takes us away from having to do reporting and accountability to the federal government. And otherwise, nothing is changing as to how things were allocated. That's, that's what we're agreeing on here. And we're just making things easier.
Right, yes.
So those monies will still be heading towards those projects, it's just without the timeline looming in.
If we have any money left over, can we get a bathroom?
We just found out that we don't have any money.
I know, but maybe.
We're doing too good a job spending it.
I know. I don't think they're that expensive.
So because we're saying this publicly, the federal government knows that this is going on, basically.
Yes, yes.
And it's within their guidance. It was actually a federal webinar that used the term easy button. And said, why wouldn't you do it that way?
And while we, like you can see from the revenue, the first revenue replacement slide that shows our projects, that we were initially available to put 48.8 million through, so we couldn't do like the two examples, throw all of it through. But we got close.
How will this be reported to us in our five-year projections and such? So right now, one of, I think, one of the most confusing things in our projections, you know, it's like page 95 of our, of our budget, right? We do the five-year projections and we have the reimbursements and then we have like the expenses. And the reimbursements is, you know, that's one of the things I asked you to change in, I think a year or two ago, was that we, that we would end the reimbursements. So is this going to now reflect in the five-year budget, you know, coming up as we start seeing this in November and December? Is this going to start reflecting in there as a, as an operating transfer then, rather than a reimbursement? Since it's all staying in-house and we wouldn't be a reimbursement from federal account?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I think that's actually going to be a really helpful distinction for us so that we understand how these taxpayers' dollars are being used. I think that's going to be really helpful for us to make good decisions on council, understanding it in that way. I've really hated using it as a, as a reimbursement from like, I don't need to say it, work goes on my head for numbers.
Well, the expenses would still be in the, you know, police department, parks department, et cetera, but there would be an offering transfer.
Rather than reimbursement.
Revenue line.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a really healthy way to view it now. And that's how I've been viewing it in my head, but that's not how it's been on paper. So I'll be excited when things in my head are the same as paper. Thanks.
What matters?
I should just ask these questions off the mic. Nobody helps.
What month would this resolution come about then? December, November?
Next month.
We could do it in the next month.
Yeah.
Or it could be August.
First meeting.
We want to get it done before we start budgets and before we have to do our third quarter report.
Yeah. All right, well, I don't think anyone else on council has any questions. I'm sure Ed, Mel and Tyler will be reaching out if they. I'm sure Ed, Mel and Tyler will be reaching out if they have concerns, comments, or things they would like to clarify. I think that that will call the study session for the day if everyone's good.
I would also just.
Mark or myself.
I was going to say, make sure you don't just put my name.
Day will be Friday.
Good luck with the move and everything that's going on. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Victoria, very much.